Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the April 18th Policy Session of the Phoenix City Council. We have several treats today. The first of which is on our Pledge of Allegiance. Cash Penberthy will lead us today. He is son of Jordan Penberthy, a Phoenix firefighter and grandson of Police Officer Gordon Penberthy and was a recently elected mayor of his fifth grade. So if you could all rise and Cash, please lead us.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cash. You did just an absolutely wonderful job and we are looking forward to a bright future. And we want to thank your whole family for your commitment to a safer community. You started off us on a very positive note. So thank you so much and congratulations. It is also an exciting day because we welcome our two new council members, Councilwoman Kevin Robinson and Councilwoman Keisha Hadd Washington. And we celebrate the reelection of Councilwoman Laura Pastor and Councilwoman Jim Waring. Thank you to our incredible staff across several departments who organized a beautiful inauguration ceremony and a special thanks to Stephanie Bracken. We will begin today with council information and follow-up requests. Councilwoman Stark, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to welcome our two newest council members. It's a pleasure to have you here. And just very briefly, I wanted to, I'm proud of our city for one reason. So in March, Inger and I led Team Phoenix at the Aunt Rita's AIDS Walk. And we raised the second most money of any team there. So I think that's pretty special. And we also have bragging rights because our own Zach Wallace won the 5K. So we have like a real athlete working for the city of Phoenix. But most importantly, the last few years, the walk has been in Tempe and next year it comes back to Phoenix. Very excited about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go next to the Vice Mayor who has slides and then Councilwoman Gordado, followed by Councilwoman Pastor, who also has slides.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off with a District 7 update with a where we've been section. You can go to the next slide. These last few weeks, our team was present at the Series Arizona Lawn Day at the State Capitol, which was EV Advocacy Day in partnership with the Arizona Technology Council and Plug in America. Our team shared our climate accomplishments with legislators and advocates on how we best build an electric future. We also finally celebrated the grand opening of the Cesar Chavez Community Center in Levine. This long awaited community center is truly, truly impressive and I just want to give a huge congratulations to our entire park staff and patient residents who can now enjoy a state of the art facility. My team is also eyeing the space for our next quarterly Levine update. Next slide. In Maryvale, I got to join the U.S. Postal Service for an amazing Art of the Skateboard stamp unveiling during Phoenix AM at Desert West Park. One of the local artists who was honored, her name is Dior Greenwood. She's the first ever to depict Arizona's Navajo Nation on a national scale. So I want to give her another congratulations for that. And finally, I joined the Siwa Putli Collective for a youth and garden workshop event at Spaces of Opportunity, which is in the South Phoenix portion of my district. It was so fun to see so many youth engage in the gardening and sustainable activities. Next slide. This weekend, our city might be seeing close to 100 degree days. So I wanted to take a few moments to update on critical heat relief work that I've been championing in District 7. First, we've been working to make sure that cold water and extra shade is accessible to residents outside of the Human Services Campus. Cold water has been available since March 29th, the earliest that it's ever been. And 24/7 security has been hired to make sure there are no disruptions to water access in that area. Second, on May 1st, additional shade structures will be up in and out of the campus. And on May 2nd, the Office of Heat Response will be starting their heat relief shifts. Third, my office is hyper-focused on ensuring that we do everything we can to save lives this summer, from finding additional indoor respite to on-the-ground solutions. I also want to thank the mayor for asking FEMA to reconsider heat as a declared disaster. Solutions for heat-related deaths can and need to happen in Phoenix and we need federal dollars to do so. I want to make sure that we're tackling the biggest, most obvious problems head-on, which is older adults and our unsheltered community who are dying from heat. We expect this every year and we need to move faster. Two individuals that I will be able to recognize later this evening at our Impact Volunteer Awards are Austin Davis and Eddie Chavez Calderon. They had a simple idea of putting together a mobile cooling van, which I funded through our participatory budget last year. They saved hundreds of lives last summer going around the city with the mobile cooling van. And our city took notice. The Office of Heat Response and Mitigation will now be implementing that same effort this summer. So thank you to Eddie and Austin for your incredible lifesaving work. Next slide. I attended two great budget hearings this month. Community members and nonprofits shared how much they'd like to see our ARPA-funded free transit program come back, more biking infrastructure, 24/7 public bathrooms has been coming up a number of times, and additional investments in city park rangers. I'll be advocating for this as well when council gets the revised budget. Next slide. I wanted to take a moment to highlight a unique constituent case that my office has received. A resident at the Westward Ho reached out last week regarding issues finding public outlets to charge their electric wheelchair in downtown Phoenix. Specifically, they highlighted the issue of not being able to charge at our transit stations and parks because of inconsistent access to outlets. Our light rail administrator is working with Valley Metro to see what policies they can implement to ensure that any individual who's using a mobility device that requires power can charge said device while waiting for the light rail or the bus. As you know, we are a sprawling city and we need to think about every resident's various modes of transportation. Next slide. Few events to look forward to. There are tons happening. Tomorrow, I will be at Bike to Work Day and then I'll be joining the City of Phoenix, the mayor, and the International Rescue Committee to meet with Assistant Secretary of State for the Bureau of Populations, Refugees, and Migration, Julieta Valz Noiz, to talk about our refugee resettlement work. This Saturday is Earth Day and you'll be able to find us all over District 7. We'll be at the Keep Phoenix Beautiful Cleanup, the Redeem Neighborhoods Cleanup, the Chispa Earth Day Event, and many more. On April 24th, our office is partnering with Representative Jen Longden, Taro's Health, and Vaya del Sol to host a free Narcan training at Burton Bar Library. All are welcome. And finally, you can join us for the upcoming Transportation Electrification Action Plan Community Workshop on April 19th in Maryvale and April 27th in South Phoenix. More information can be found at phoenix.gov. And finally, I also want to join, you can go to the next slide, I want to join others in congratulating our two new council members. Welcome. It reminds me that tomorrow, I'm celebrating two years on the Phoenix City Council. It's been an incredibly rewarding opportunity. We get to implement solutions quickly, daily in fact, and I'm very grateful for the thousands of residents who we've been able to engage in this work. Thank you so much. That's all for me.
Thank you. Happy anniversary to you and Councilwoman O'Brien. We'll go to Councilwoman Gordado, followed by Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also want to take a moment to welcome our two new council members. Welcome. I think you guys got a little bit of a taste already with the long e-session. So just want to welcome you guys to the council. And I'm also excited to announce that my team completed our District 5 Budget Community Engagement Survey Campaign. My team surpassed our goal of 1,000 surveys with 1,112 responses, including the Spanish version of the survey. Most of the surveys were done by in-person conversations at neighborhood parks, libraries, community centers, schools, and shopping centers. A huge thank you to Emanuel, Melina, Deborah, Rosario, and all the other volunteers who helped us surpass our goal. I know that at the beginning, they didn't think it was possible, but I think anything is possible if we just put our mind to it. So congratulations to all. We are beginning to review the survey responses that have seen a lot of concern related to homelessness crisis and the opioid epidemic. There have also been a lot of positive feedback for our parks and other city services. My team and I also attended two budget hearings, one at the Washington Activities Center on April 4th and the other at the Maryvale Community Center on April 10th. Both meetings were well-attended and City Manager Jeff Barton and city staff received insightful comments from the community members and District 5 residents. I want to personally thank all of the city staff that helped with this year's budget community outreach and presentations. It was a really great team effort. After a five-year break, I'm excited that our very own Maryvale High School student volunteers will be honored at the Impact Volunteer Award Ceremony today, Tuesday, April 18th. For the past nine months, these Maryvale High School students have been volunteering with my district office. They have demonstrated their leadership by canvassing neighborhoods to educate Phoenix residents about city programs and resources, by participating in our community events such as back-to-school backpack giveaway, turkey giveaway, and our holiday celebration, neighborhood cleanup projects, wear cool heat relief outreach, and help collect the required signatures for the gated alley program. Thanks to the support of these young leaders, 11 alley segments have been approved to be gated along 27th Avenue Neighborhoods. So congratulations on that. I am also very proud of these students as they have demonstrated their passion for making a positive change and helping to create a long-lasting improvements in our community. Special thanks to Daniela Cortez and Alex Ceredia, who will accept this award for Maryvale District 5 High School volunteers, and to Melina from my team who trained them and led the way. Finally, I want to invite residents our next Monday, April 24th at 6:00 PM for another High Capacity Transit Study Meeting at the Maryvale Community Center in cooperation with Valley Metro. The entire West Phoenix community is invited to share their ideas on what types of public transit they want in their neighborhoods. As our city continues to grow, we need sustainable transportation solutions to get our residents to work and school and to connect our West Phoenix community to our downtown and East Valley. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor.
As you can, as you can see, right here is the Wake Up Club from Charles Harris Elementary School. They were here to visit one of our committee meetings and then we talked about city business and had pizza. Next slide. Dragon Pony Show. District 4 was proud to represent during the Dragon Pony Brunch hosted by Humpaki Programs at their beautiful ranch. A special shout-out to Dr. Karen Johnson, who donated $6,000 to sponsor our pony. They raised at the event, the money that they raised at the event is going towards the LGBTQIAIA programs. Humpaki hosts a number of impactful programs at the ranch, including equine-assisted psychotherapy. Next slide. Thank you to Nevadilla Chayos for allowing us to use your location on McDowell and 43rd Avenue for our April community chat and providing everyone with treats. Nevadilla Chayos is a locally-owned chain of ice cream shops in the valley. Their service was amazing and their space allowed for the west side of District 4 to open up a great conversation this past Wednesday. I would like to thank those that participated in the community chat. We were addressing safety concerns and homelessness on the west side, the Phoenix BRT survey, and continuing Latin, Latino outreach. ULI, we had a meeting April 6th at Osborne Middle School on the West Camelback Light Rail Corridor and unveiled the ULI Arizona Final Report on the Camelback Corridor. It's a diverse mix of businesses and this program or ULI is talking about redevelopment in that area. Giselle, our constituent service coordinator, has been regularly going out to local businesses in the district to provide information on cool pavement. It's always important to highlight the local businesses in our district. And here they are. Next slide. Chicanos Poder de Causa had a health fair, health and resource fair. And as you can see, we're out there at Casa Primavera. I wanted to thank Nicole Witt, the city's Public Health Advisor, for joining us. Next slide. USS Phoenix, the Cold War Monument Banner unveiling. This is, was a great event. I was joined by Pete Lemansky and also Captain Carroll and many other veterans and community members at Steel Indian School Park for the unveiling of the banner that depicts what the future USS Phoenix Cold War monument will look like. Captain Lemansky has been working on this for 27 years and has gone through many mayors and council people. But we're getting there. Congratulations. Next slide. Our in-person budget hearings, as you can see me in action right here, and as you can see everybody, I was excited in the arts community budget hearing. What we heard is street maintenance, more productive bike lanes, park activation, historic preservation, more public Wi-Fi, more funding for arts and cultures, and opening of bathrooms. Next slide. At the Brett Tarver Community Center, we are trying to activate all our centers. Self-defense class with D4 block watch leaders, Zumba, and block with, well, I call her Linda, block watch leader. So thank you. As you can see, yesterday, I renewed my oath of office serving District 4 for the third and final time yesterday. I am incredibly honored that the residents of District 4 has once again elected me to serve and represent them. And I want to thank my entire family for supporting me along the way. I also want to welcome our new members to the dais. And then my final, I believe, the opioid use and overdose community conversation at Adam Diaz, April 27th at 5:30. Thank you so much. We will hear from leaders and experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council member? Updates? Councilmember, Councilwoman Waring?
Thank you, Mayor. It was an honor to be sworn in yesterday. I would like now to take this opportunity to repeat my entire speech. I'm just kidding. I see the horrified look on your faces, but I did want to welcome Keisha and Kevin. Congratulations and honored to be serving with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are joined by very special guests today. We want to welcome the Arizona State University cohort of the Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative Civic Engagement Institute. This is a very prestigious program in partnership with the United States State Department. We are welcoming 21 fellows from 10 Southeast Asian countries. The fellows were selected by their U.S. Embassy based on their background experience, leadership record, and commitment to service. It is certainly an honor to have you with us here today and we hope that you have a great experience while you're in Phoenix. Thank you for joining us. We'll next turn to the city manager.
Mayor, members, council, we're excited to be here today. You want me to do the budget update first, Mayor, or item one?
Yes. We will start with any budget update you have.
Mayor, members of the council, again, I just want to echo some of your comments. We've now just concluded our community budget process and I'm excited also about the feedback that we received during those meetings. I also want to thank you for your participation at those meetings as well as staff. We will bring the city manager's budget back on May 2nd. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then city manager, should I turn to you to introduce item one or to Ginger?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. I'll do a very brief update on all the items. Wasn't planning to, but I feel like I should say something. You know, the ability to produce clean and potable water and to move it across over 500 square miles is no easy feat. And you know, to be honest with you, over the last couple of years, we need to make sure that we adequately fund our water infrastructure and the ability to push that water. There are significant pressures that you'll hear from staff today that have made that more and more challenging. We are a desert city. We need water to survive. It's a basic staple of life. And so it's time to take care of that system. And again, today's ask is nothing, it's nothing that I take for granted. It's a hard ask. It's a tough ask. But the reality is we must protect our water and protect our ability to move it across the city. The other thing I want to let you know is just two minutes ago, S&amp;P reevaluated our bonds on our wastewater and we have been upgraded from AA+ to AAA. And that upgrade is largely based on the ability, their belief that we have the resources to properly fund that system. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ginger and Troy and team, and they will talk to you about our asks for item one, two.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager Barton. All right. I'm Ginger Spencer, Deputy City Manager, and I have oversight for the Water Services Department. I'm here today with Troy Hayes, Water Services Director, Nancy Allen, Environmental Programs Director, and Deputy City Manager Alan Stevenson, who has oversight for Environmental Programs Office. Our presentation. Alrighty. So we're here to talk about the proposed increases to the water and wastewater rates and the stormwater fee. Anytime we talk about proposed increases to our rates and fees, it takes a village. So I want to acknowledge the leadership of our mayor and council and the staff of the Water Services Department and the Office of Environmental Programs, as well as the Street Transportation Department staff, the Planning Development Department, as well as departments that you don't see on the slide, including the City Manager's Office, Finance Department, and Budget and Research. So, the water and wastewater rates and the stormwater fee appear on your city services bill. This is the monthly bill that you get from the Water Department and it's affectionately called the Water Bill. As you can see on the slide, the bill includes a water base fee plus a water usage fee, which is a variable fee. It also includes a stormwater fee that's included under state and other taxes, and a wastewater fee, which is also known as the sewer fee. And so we'll cover each of these as Troy and Nancy go through the presentation. The increases that we're seeking today on the water and wastewater side are due to inflationary pressures and their impact to our water and wastewater operations and capital improvement program. And the increase on the stormwater fee is due to regulatory requirements. I want to recognize the strong leadership of our Water Department and Water Strategy Team. Wherever we can control costs, staff has done that. Staff has also looked for efficiencies to lessen the impact to our rate payers and they continue to seek federal grant opportunities to help fund our infrastructure needs, all while maintaining a strong AAA bond rating. I'd also like to acknowledge the members of the Citizen Water and Wastewater Rate Advisory Committee that approved the recommendations that you'll hear today. And the work of Deputy City Manager Karen Peters before she retired, and the Transportation Infrastructure and Planning Subcommittee members who recommended that we increase our outreach in the community and the number of meetings that we have on the proposed increases. And lastly, the first part of our presentation will be an overview of the proposed increases for all three areas, water, wastewater, and stormwater. And the second part will be to seek council approval to issue the 60-day notices of intent for water and wastewater, to set a public hearing on the proposed water and wastewater rates, which are required by state law. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Troy Hayes.
The financial and operating and capital plans are all built to meet the mission of the department, which is to provide reliable and cost-effective water services to meet the public's needs. The goal of the financial plan is to maintain the trust that we have built and established with our customers through safe, reliable systems. We have exceeded all regulatory requirements while we responsibly rehabilitate, replace critical infrastructure systems. And we've all seen in the news where cities across the U.S. haven't done these and the outcomes of those. We also want to maintain our very high bond ratings to minimize the costs when we do have to borrow money for that infrastructure, and all of this while balancing affordability. In 2020, the department completed the most recent efficiency study to help identify and implement efficiencies to lower operating costs. In the study, we identified 39 recommendations that were implemented. The department has worked in our procurement section to implement strategies and processes to be able to address potential changes in the markets for goods. This will allow us to capture potential decreases in costs that may materialize in the future. The department implemented a copper recovery program that helped reduce our purchases of copper by 56%. The department has also been a leader in energy management. We are continually conducting system evaluations to reduce our pumping costs and through these initiatives, we've saved over $8 million in total savings with a $1.6 million in annual savings. In 2022, the valley saw the highest inflationary rate for metro areas with approximately 12%. And these increases were not isolated to consumer goods as our cost to provide a gallon of water has increased. Both of our utilities have experienced significant cost increases associated with inflationary pressures. The issues were not isolated to Phoenix as other water and wastewater utilities across the nation have experienced these pressures and causing the need for similar revenue increases. This table illustrates the inflationary increases that the department has experienced over the large four operating expenses. The water utility has experienced a dramatic 136% increase in the chemical cost and a 51% increase on the wastewater side. For electricity, we've seen a 12% increase on the water side and a 17% increase for the wastewater utility, and a 35% increase in the raw water costs associated with the drought conditions and the cost of raw water increasing. And we've also increased our personnel costs. Over the past few years, we've experienced vacancies in key operating divisions. These increases will allow the city to retain and recruit highly skilled staff to help provide the essential services from the water and wastewater utilities. In 2022, Texas A&amp;M University updated their study on the water and wastewater services affordability in the U.S. This graph represents cities' percentages of disposable income for the 20th percentile of income, as those were potentially identified as the most vulnerable. You don't need to be concerned with the numbers, but where you want to be is towards the bottom of that chart. And on this graph, on the right, the number of hours that we have to be worked at minimum wage to provide basic water and wastewater service. Again, you want to be towards the bottom of this graph. And in both of these graphs, you can see Phoenix rates as some of the most affordable rates in the U.S. This is the city services bill that contains the fees and charges associated with the city, as Ginger kind of highlighted when we start. The first fee that I want to identify is the water base fee. This is dependent upon the meter size and associated with, that's associated with the property and contains the water usage up to the allowance level. The water usage fee is for all of the water uses above the allowance levels. And I'll explain on the next slide what I mean by the allowance levels. And this is the fee that we are proposing to change. And then below this is the sewer fee. This section of the bill would also be affected by the sewer fee changes. I want to explain the City of Phoenix's water rate structure in its most simplest forms and the allowance level. The first portion is the base fee. This amount of the bill covers the cost of reading the meters and generating and sending the monthly bill. For the City of Phoenix, a unique attribute of the base fee is that it contains a certain amount of water in what we refer to as the allowance level. So for approximately $5 or $6 a month for a single-family residential home, you will receive approximately 3,800 gallons in the winter and 6,000 gallons in the summer included in this charge. So it's like getting a large tanker truck of water delivered to your house for $5 or $6 a month. For water utilized above those amounts, the customers then charge a set rate for that water usage. We've shown this graphic in other discussions about water conservation. This shows that over the past 30 years, our customers have embraced water conservation initiatives and lifestyle changes to drop our per-person water use by over 30% and thus decreasing our average water use. Our current rate structure that was established in 1990 has two rates. The fixed or base rate, which we talked about before, which applies to all customers that contain, that also contains a certain amount of water meant to provide basic water services at a variable affordable cost. The amount of water above those levels are then subjected to the variable rate charges. We are proposing to lower the amount of water included in the base water charge by the ratio of the average water use. by the ratio of the average water use in 1990 as compared to our current levels, and thus further incentivizing water conservation. The proposed change would better align the allowance levels with the current average water usage and have a larger portion of the water usage under the volumetric or actual water rate. With discussions with our rate advisory committee, we feel that these new levels strike the balance between water conservation and affordability. Having a portion of the customer's water usage included in the low monthly rate base fee allows some conscientious customers to receive water services at a very low rate, making our utility one of the most affordable in the nation.
May I ask a question?
Councilwoman Pastor.
Go back to slide 14. In the summer, there's more evaporation that happens in the summer. So why are we going from 10 to 8 and not 10 to 9?
And so the evaluation of the average water use in the summer, we compare that to when the rate structure was established, and it's just that ratio that that was the closest unit. It's still about 6,000 gallons a month that they would get included, which is the proposed eight units is the 6,000 gallons.
So I'm gonna be devil's advocate right here, because those that have pools, with the eight units, will they still have enough water or be in a situation where they can manage their pools?
Yeah, the 6,000 gallons is more than, you know, a family that would need to for their cleaning and cooking and things indoor, so it does allow for some outdoor. So it's just dependent upon their evaporation rate and what they have going on with their pool. If they have leaks associated with their pool, it probably wouldn't keep up with that.
Okay. Is there a way to evaluate that? Or is there a way to...
Definitely, we can look into those things.
Look at that piece, because that may be...
Issue, yeah.
An issue. Thank you.
We can definitely look at that. While any burden of our customers that may experience due to these rate changes is a very serious matter, it's worth noting that many of our customers will be able to mitigate the impacts of the allowance changes on their bill without investing in expensive new appliances or landscaping. This analysis shows from our water conservation group that a single-family home customer were to take our existing landscaping watering guides and take the recommended uses and fix all of the leaks in their homes, that they would be able to reduce their water use by nearly four units a month or double the maximum proposed allowance change in the summer. The department will also be rolling out new water conservation initiatives, many of which that will start this summer. We are enhancing our toilet replacement program with a $75 incentive for the installation of low-flow toilets. We will also have a $75 incentive for the installation of a new irrigation controller. And with our work with Arizona State University, we will be providing free zero-scape landscaping plans that can be adapted to your household and to give ideas and concept for those individuals that are wanting to tackle that change and change their landscape, but still need a little help with the ideas. The department is also developing a turf removal program, with the first phase rolling out for our commercial customers probably this fall. The department will start an outreach highlighting these programs, and will be also directly reaching out to approximately 900 customers that have received assistance from the department with their bills in the past and that we believe that will be affected by the changes in the allowance levels. The department will then conduct a home audit to identify areas where water can be conserved, and those households will then be eligible for a special irrigation controller incentive for participating in this home audit. On January 26, the Water and Wastewater Rate Advisory Committee unanimously recommended the proposed revenue adjustments, as well as adopted the changes for the allowance level to stronger message water conservation. We are proposing a 6.5% increase in October of '23 for the water and wastewater revenue, and a 6.5% increase in March of 2024. This would then be followed up with a 13% increase for the water and a 7% increase for the wastewater in 2025. While these percentages seem cumulative, and some have stated that these increases are over 40%, the percentages are only applied to the specific line items of the bill, and therefore, the increases spread over a three-year period. When completed, would only result in an approximately 16% increase in the overall city services bill for the average user. This slide shows the overall impact of the proposed revenue increases to the average single-family homes, assuming that they don't make any water conservation changes, and over the three-year period, the impact. And with that, I will turn it over to Nancy to cover the stormwater excise tax.
Thank you, Troy, Mayor, council members. So far, we've been hearing about the proposed water and wastewater rate adjustments. Now, we're going to shift to the proposed increase in the stormwater excise tax, which would affect all water accounts in the city of Phoenix. This is separate from the rates that we just discussed, which cannot be used to support the stormwater program. I'll cover what the tax is, the background on why we have it, and what the rate will include. Several city departments receive funding through the stormwater excise tax to implement permit requirements via the interdepartmental stormwater management program. The departments that have the bulk of the stormwater compliance activities we are talking about here today are the Water Services Department, who oversees the city's stormwater management program and undertakes permit-required activities such as private facility inspections, public outreach, and water quality monitoring; the Streets Transportation Department, who takes the lead on permit requirements such as maintenance and inspections of the city's drainage system and street sweeping; and the Planning and Development Department, who does permit actions such as private construction plan review and inspections; and the Office of Environmental Programs, who inspects city facilities and assists in the training program for permit compliance. In Phoenix, stormwater is rainwater that flows over impervious surfaces and does not soak into the ground. This stormwater enters our storm drain pipes, which carry the water to protected surface waters like the Salt River or Skunk Creek. Unlike water we use to flush our toilets with, stormwater does not go to a treatment plant. It flows directly from the storm drains, untreated, into our rivers and water sheds. As stormwater flows across areas like roads, parking lots, and into the storm drains, it can pick up pollutants like oil, pet waste, and carry them into our washes and rivers. This creates a significant water quality challenge. As a result, the city is required to have a municipal, separate storm sewer system, or MS4, permit to operate our storm drain system. The stormwater excise tax funds compliance with the city's MS4 permit. This permit is a requirement of the Federal Clean Water Act and is not a voluntary program. This slide shows the history of the stormwater tax to date. The tax structure was tied to water meter size, where a single-family residential water meter, a 5/8 or 3/4, had the lowest rate, with the rate increasing as the water meter size increased. No change is proposed to this structure. The proposed increase is 25 cents per month per single-family resident water meter. This would raise the total tax from 70 cents a month to 95 cents per month for those meter sizes. As you can see, the tax increases at a graduated rate as a water meter size increase. The approval of this tax increase will provide approximately $2 million per year and would support actions needed to comply with the city's permit. If approved by the city council, this increase would go into effect on October 1st of 2023. The increase would support the new stormwater post-construction program required by the permit and would support additional outreach, inspection, and reporting requirements across the program, and a new storm drain management tools and database to help... Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Got behind a slide. And a new database to help manage this complex permit. A survey of the storm sewer system and up to 10 site-specific assessments annually would also be supported by this increase. The permit actions and the programs require additional resources, including items such as new positions that would be phased in over four years, equipment, database development, and a storm drain asset management program and a citywide storm system assessment. City staff work to avoid unnecessary costs to keep the tax increase as low as possible. For example, the new stormwater post-construction program is being cited in the Planning and Development Department to use existing expertise and processes. This program is also emphasizing owner-led inspections to minimize staffing costs. Limiting the stormwater site-specific evaluations to 10 annually also helps balance a proactive system management while minimizing a tax increase. The increase would provide city staff the resources needed for many of the tasks necessary for maintaining compliance with our MS4 permit. The public outreach for this proposal is happening in tandem with the water and wastewater rate outreach. I'll now turn it over to Alan Stevenson to wrap up the presentation. Oh, I missed a bunch of slides. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Nancy, Mayor, and Council. As you can see from the slides and with your input, staff has developed a robust outreach process where we discuss all three of the proposed increases at the same meetings. There are seven public meetings throughout the city that are being held. In addition, there was information that was available at each of the budget hearings at the back of the table. And I, again, want to thank those of you that provided input to help us develop this outreach program. And we are continuing to work on implementing that, as Nancy mentioned, and you can see on the slides here as well for the dates of upcoming meetings. In addition, we have the Village Planning Committee meetings, where we are attending all of those meetings, there are 15 of them, to present information. There's posted information on the website about it. There's information in our monthly bills. The call center virtual recording has information about it. There's updates to social media and marketing campaigns as well. And then we've been attending several meetings that you guys have asked staff to attend for coffee chats or community group meetings, and we're happy to attend any other meetings that you would like us to as well. Just please let us know, and we'll be there. In summary, the overall Phoenix rates are very affordable for water and wastewater, and this increase is necessary to continue providing safe and efficient service delivery. Inflationary impacts are drastically affecting both operating and capital budgets as seen throughout the country and the utility industry. The stormwater increase is driven by the city requirements to comply with state and federal laws via issuance of the MS4 permit. Proposed approval process, as outlined up here, will have staff continuing on the outreach through May of 2023. As Ginger noted at the start of this discussion, we are asking for items two and three on this agenda to allow for the increase in water and wastewater rates and set the public hearings date. And then we'll be back on June 28 for a formal city council public hearing and vote to ask for the increase in all three of the items. And then the implementation date would be October of 2023 of this year if approved. With that, staff's happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. And if it's okay with my colleagues, we have three agenda items: wastewater, stormwater, and the traditional water rate. I would like to take them all together and take questions on all at once. So if it works for the clerk, shall we convene the formal meeting now?
Yes, Mayor.
Do we need a motion?
We just need roll call, Mayor, and then we'll be ready for a motion on those two last items.
All right. Let's call the roll to enter into a formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council.
Councilwoman Wardado.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hodge-Washington. Councilwoman O'Brien. Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark.
Yes.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ansari.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. Welcome to our formal meeting. We will go ahead and begin with public comment. We are very lucky to have a water advisory committee who has advised us on this. Dave White with Arizona State University has chaired that committee, and we have a variety of stakeholders from local residents to the AFL-CIO that participate in advising us on that. And we begin today with a representative of that committee, Martin Schultz, who is here to testify. And so appreciate your longtime service to the city of Phoenix.
Mayor, thank you, members of the council, and welcome to new members of the council. And I was thinking, as I was listening to these presentations, that the policies of water in this area, Phoenix specifically, and this urbanizing area, to me, started in the 1980 Groundwater Management Act, which some of you may remember was the legislature's contribution to our water policy, and then we've gone from there, growing like Topsy, but providing water services and wastewater services. And during my career, and I know our time is limited, during my career, I worked for Arizona Public Service Company in the Palomar nuclear power plant and had the opportunity to work with the city of Phoenix in something at that time was very creative, using the wastewater that was available from the six cities to actually cool a nuclear power plant in the middle of the desert. Today, that nuclear power plant produces 3,000 megawatts every day and is arguably the best power plant in the country. It definitely benefits Arizona and Phoenix. Up to date, I was glad, as a retiree mayor, to accept an opportunity to sit with these talented people in the Water and Wastewater Committee and hear some plans going forward in the future. And I really think that's important, the future, because the future is all about the urbanization of this area, the fast pace of growth. Just look around and check it out, and look at the multifamily units and the number of people and the congestion on the streets, you name it. We have a lot of positive things going. And so creative and forward-looking thinking as it relates to water and wastewater is absolutely necessary. I don't think it's necessary for me to go into the detail that was well-presented by the staff, but the importance of the future vision they have is as follows. Number one, get ahead of it by making sure the water rates are reasonable and fair. And there is a cost, too. Things like preparing so that you have the flexibility to provide water and wastewater in the future, in a future that is not a slam dunk. It's a little uncertain, as you can see from headlines and all the news going on. Bottom line is, I support all of the recommendations for having the public hearing and then going to increase the rates so that we can have the bonds going forward and take care of the city for many, many years to come. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
To confirm, the committee reviewed the staff's proposals and numbers and made a recommendation?
We have, that's true. We've had many meetings. They've been detailed meetings. You got some detail today, but if you want to get detail in terms of not only the numbers, but the capital requirements and the capital projects that are envisioned here. And the reason for those projects, and they are complicated, is that when you have to be flexible, not only to provide water and then the wastewater and look to the future, you've got to have some pretty sophisticated plans in mind. And I will certify to you that the plans that our committee, and I'm not speaking for all of them, but I'm sure they would concur, this is a pretty sophisticated proposal. This isn't a garden-variety, run-of-the-mill proposal. This is very sophisticated. It anticipates that there will be challenges in the future, but I think the capital investment that you're envisioning, Mayor, and the city has proposed is going to serve us well for a long time in the future.
Thank you so much. Any additional questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Schultz,
Thank you.
for your service to our community with many hats. We will go to virtual public comment, and Mark Rodriguez.
Hello, Mayor Kate Gallego and members of the Phoenix City Council. It's good to hear from you again. I'm going to welcome to the newest council members. Welcome. And also on these water taxes and all that stuff, because, you know, it's like all these other, like the bills and all that stuff that you guys are promoting for the city of Phoenix and all that stuff. And Mayor Gallego, it's good to hear from you again. And then also, Vice Mayor, good to see you again, and the members and all that stuff. And also, I'm being professional, because I'm trying to save up some water and like money and all that stuff. And I want to live on a public place and all that stuff. And if I get an apartment, I will move out of here. And Mayor Gallego, it's good to hear from you. A shout-out to all of you guys, including Kevin Robertson and Keesha Hus-Washington. Welcome. And returning Laura Pastor and Jim Waring. It's good to hear from you guys. And I'm being professional and all that stuff. And... And I'm being professional and all that stuff and good to, you know, the water tax and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and all that stuff. And Mayor Gallego, it's good to rock with you guys. And Yasmin Ansari, Laura Pastor, do some Japanese. Hasta la vista, baby. Adios.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for that testimony. For our staff, do we have any additional members of the public wishing to?
Mayor, we do not.
Wonderful, thank you. We'll turn then to council member comments and questions. Actually, should we first, do you want to do a motion or should we begin with questions? We'll start, okay. We'll recognize the Vice Mayor. We'll have two motions, and so on item number two first.
So on item two, I move that council adopt this notice of intention to consider increases in water rate revenues and set a public hearing for June 28th formal meeting.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and now we will go to council member questions, and it can be on items one, two, or three. Councilwoman Guerdado.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I just want to make comments on two and three, and I just want to make sure that residents understand what these items are proposing to do. We've gotten a lot of phone calls to our office in the last couple of days, and from what we're understanding, the way the city of Phoenix charges for water is a little different than other places. All Phoenix residents who are water rate payers pay what is called a water-based fee. Right now, we are allocated a certain amount of water in the summer months and certain amount of water in the winter months, from what we understand. When we use more water than these levels, we pay a water usage fee based on how much water we use. The proposed water rate hikes, as they are presented today, do three things to Phoenix residents who pay a monthly water bill. First, it drastically reduces the amount of water we receive from what we pay in our water-based fee. This water reduction will mean our monthly allocations will decrease 37.5% in the summer months and decrease 40% in the winter months. This means that the amount of water we will be able to use before the water usage rate kicks in will be substantially smaller than they are today. Next, this proposal allows the city to raise those water usage rates by up to 26% over the next two fiscal years. Since 2019, we have already raised water rates by 18.5%. Finally, the proposal allows the city to raise the rate for wastewater up to 20% over the next two fiscal years. My concern with the proposed water rate increase is that we are asking Phoenix residents to pay more for less water. And why are we doing this? One of the issues that is brought up is water inflation or the rising costs to our water system. But if you take a moment to look at where prices are increasing in our water system, you can see that the largest increases are in the price of chemicals. Chemicals for wastewater increased 51%, and chemicals for water increased an incredible 136%. Again, these costs for chemicals are the single largest increase in cost to our city system, yet the chemical companies we purchase from, like Ecolab and Viola, are not hurting economically. Just this past December, Ecolab posted an 11.4% revenue increase year over year, which translates to $14.1 billion. Viola actually runs the city of Phoenix's Lake Pleasant Water Treatment Plant. In 2022, the company global revenue was reported to jump to $30.9 billion when they bought our rival water chemical company. An audit conducted by the city of Phoenix Auditor Department of Viola's Lake Pleasant Water Treatment Plant in October 22 found items for improvement in all audited areas except invoices and payments, meaning Viola was doing a very good job charging the city of Phoenix their work, but not doing a good job at maintaining the water treatment plant or securing the facility or monitoring and being in compliance to keep our water safe. Economists have come up with a new term to describe the rising cost of inflation that companies across the globe are using as a smokescreen to rake in record profits. They called it greedflation. My concern with the water rate increase is that they are passing the cost of this greedflation off to working people in Phoenix, our residents. We are not calling out Viola or Ecolab on any other chemical companies we do business with for inflating their prices as they post huge profits. We are not using the purchasing power of the city to negotiate a fair deal for our residents. We are taking the easy way out and passing the buck to our residents. At this point, it should go without saying that too many families in my district and across the city are living paycheck to paycheck, while homelessness has risen nationally by only 1% since 2020. In Arizona, it has jumped by a disastrous 23%. We cannot continue to pass the cost to working-class families and expect there will be no consequences. Some may argue that this water rate increase is needed to improve our water system infrastructure. I, like everyone on this council, want to ensure we have a modern and dynamic water system to deliver clean drinking water to all city residents. But my concern with the argument that these drastic prices increases are needed for infrastructure is that we now have a federal government that is pumping billions of dollars into infrastructure across the country. The bipartisan infrastructure law invests more than $50 billion through the Environmental Projects Agency, highly successful water infrastructure programs that includes over $20 billion for safe drinking water, $15 billion dedicated funding to replace lead pipes, $12 billion to ensure clean water for communities, $1.8 billion to protect regional waters, and $135 million for additional water improvements. So is the plan, so I guess my one question I do have, have we applied for any of these programs?
Mayor, Councilwoman Guerdado, yes. So we've applied. Most of the water and wastewater funding is coming through the state revolving fund, and we've submitted the entire capital program of both the water and wastewater for those. We are currently evaluating a proposal, some funds that they've given us. The finance department's looking through that for addressing the lead-in copper rule as well as water main and sewer main replacement. So we've gotten some recommendations of some funding, and we're currently evaluating those with our finance department.
So I guess, what help do you need then from us to help be able to push that we get some of this money? Like, what support do you need from this council?
Yeah, I think right now it's just, yeah, working with the finance department to evaluate those and then to figure out financially if it's worthwhile to move forward, as all of those threes were loans. And so they're evaluating with our very high AAA bond rating of whether financially it's viable or not to move forward, is what we're evaluating. It should be done soon, is my understanding.
Got it, thank you. I mean, I just think this water rate increase does not present any clear path for tapping into, I mean, we just have to figure out, how do we tap into these federal dollars? I really think we need to get all the help that we can. I get it, I know Jeff, you and I have had these conversations on how these increases are important, you know, that we're still dealing with a lot of the consequences for, I mean, we're dealing with a lot of consequences for us not making hard decisions, and I get that. But then I also see what's happening with our residents. I don't know, Troy, if you have this number of hand, but how many folks are still delinquent in their, in their accounts?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I think it was around 5,000 or 6,000, I think, the last time that you and I spoke about it. It's kind of in that range, accounts.
And I guess, just playing devil advocates here, so what happens, these water rates increases go through, we start putting people back on the low flow, or what, then that number doubles, then what are we going to do?
Yeah, and hopefully, presumably, everybody keeps up with their bills, but that would be something that we would have to address if the delinquency rate rises. Fortunately, with the council's great guidance, we've been able to reduce that drastically over the past few years, to get that down to a level which we've seen it kind of stabilize at that level.
And then I see that we're going to be doing a whole month of meetings and going out and doing community outreach. I'm just hopeful that those meetings are much well-attended than the meetings that we've had in the past. I know that I attended a meeting maybe two, three months ago, and there were two people in the room. So I just hope that, you know, we're going to do whatever we can to really get people to attend the meetings. I, right now, could not say that I'm going to support this. I really, we've gotten a lot of negative comment from a lot of the neighbors. I do appreciate the work that staff has put into this. I really, I know, I understand, we've had, Jeff, you and I have had deep conversations about this. I want to make sure that I can get there, but I cannot get there until I don't see that we've done a robust campaign, that we've really talked to a lot of people and that we have, I know that, you know, we did this with you four years ago, Ginger, and I'm hopeful that at some point we can get there. I've just seen a lot of these meetings, and I've seen the poor attendance in these meetings, and I wouldn't feel comfortable voting for something that we haven't been able to talk to majority of our, of our residents about, just because we do see homelessness is rising. We see everything that's happening out in our communities, and I just think we just need, probably need a different formula, and how is it that we're going to work with the families that already have delinquent accounts? And how do we, how do we figure out families that do live paycheck to paycheck? Maybe we can have more conversations about that, because we see that all these companies that we're working with are making billions and billions of dollars, and we continue to charge our residents. So I'm hopeful that we can continue the conversation, but at this point, I will not be able to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Couple of questions for me, maybe starting with Nancy. I am very interested in green stormwater infrastructure and nature-based solutions to help slow down and filter the water before it gets into our storm brains. Can you tell us a little bit what we're already doing in that area, including any upcoming investments, as well as any insights you have from what Tucson is doing?
So the stormwater rate does not include any of the green stormwater infrastructure, the GSI, but the Streets Department has included eight designs standards in with their MAG supplement, and the Planning and Development Department has 10 that are available for use outside of the Rodaway. And we are working with Bloomberg and Associates on some green infrastructure projects as well. We are exploring grant opportunities to get green infrastructure in various parts of the city as well, right now. And it is, I will have to kind of defer here, because Tricia was supposed to be sitting at the table, and she had an emergency, so I am here today, and so I am not up on what Tucson is doing as much as she is at the moment, so I can't really give you an update on Tucson.
All right, we'll bookmark it, and in two months, I will ask Tricia what Tucson is doing. But they have a fee for green stormwater, and it has gotten some real attention as a positive way to really reduce overall costs by making some upfront investments.
And one of the things that we, you know, that we've been discussing as well is, the use of green infrastructure can also help with some of our other goals, as far as canopy cover and that sort of thing, especially when you couple a green stormwater feature with native species, you don't have to have the supplemental irrigation and that sort of thing. So we are exploring that as well, and that's being utilized. We know that there are private developers that are using that.
One of the things that I think was a very important message today is this is really about rising costs. So it's interesting timing, because we're having major conversations about the Colorado River and drought. But Troy, is it fair to say today is really about electricity costs, making sure we pay our employees fairly? Obviously, Councilwoman Guerdado has talked about chemical costs. This is not about the bigger conservation investments. This is really about basic maintenance of the system.
Yeah, Mayor, that is correct. So it's basically looking at the costs that we have of basic operations of both the water and wastewater utilities and the infrastructure needed to replace and rehabilitate the existing infrastructure that's in place. It doesn't necessarily put in technologies or things like that, looking towards drought and other things. And those will have to have further discussions on those.
Wonderful. I just think that's important, because we are having two parallel conversations. We're having a separate series of conversations about the ongoing drought and protecting water supplies, focused on all water sources, but with a particular emphasis on the Colorado, and then working very closely with our federal delegation, where there are some federal resources available. But we have to lead with local. I think one of the messages I keep getting from our federal partners is we have to make local investment, and then they will respond and supplement that, but that it has to be a partnership. And then I think we've a very diverse council, but one of the things we all would like to see less of is the big pipeline leaks. Are we looking at advancements in technology to help us monitor our very large system and try to make investments ahead of time to maintain those that are most vulnerable?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks for the question. So we do have existing technologies that goes and evaluates pipes to find leaks that are out there, but there is emerging technology that's out there. One of the conversations that we'll have with the Vice Mayor's staff later this week is to evaluate emerging kind of technologies in water conservation and leaks and things like that, to be able to identify those and potentially implement those to help reduce the water leakage that we have through our system.
Wonderful, thank you, and thank you, Vice Mayor, for working on that. We got to keep investing in technology. There's also, on the customer side, there have been huge advances in helping individual businesses and residents monitor their own consumption and manage it. From my perspective, energy management really went first with everything from in-home devices to apps on your phone, and the water sector has been catching up in ways that exciting and that I hope we keep looking at. I was also really pleased to see the slide about turf management, particularly when I meet with homeowners associations. They have asked us for tools to help them reduce ornamental turf, and so very appreciative that we are moving forward with that. We got to stay ahead of these investments. I had a chance to talk with the mayor of Jackson, Mississippi, and you see what happens when you don't maintain your system and how it can just impact everything in your community. I think when Cash is mayor, we got to deliver him a good system and make sure we make those investments. And then we've lately been reviewing our wastewater rates more regularly, but we did go through a period of time where we did not make those investments, and so we have to continually make those investments. The slides around how our rates compare to our peer cities was important. We are among the most affordable water rates. And I think Phoenicians understand the importance of this investment. We have conservation tools and support resources to help residents reduce their water use and support those who have financial concerns. So we have to move forward in all of these areas. We'll see if you have any other additional council members have comments or questions. Councilwoman Hodge-Washington.
I do have, sorry, I do have a few questions. Based on the presentation, it appears that a significant portion of the water rates increase is premised on inflationary pressures. I was wondering whether or not it is also, are there any capital improvement projects that this increase would be used to fund? And if so, could you provide a little detail on those projects?
So, Mayor, Councilwoman Washington, yes, the rate increase helps support, fund the increases in the operating costs, which we've historically haven't seen this large of a rise in. And so primarily, that's the focus of it, but it does also then help support and moving forward the capital programs that we do have. But primarily, most of our capital programs on the water and wastewater side are set aside to look at water pipes and sewer pipes. That's where the majority of the funds on the capital side, but then they're also at the water and wastewater plants as well. A large, another large portion that we have. Beyond that, then, you know, it's all areas. It's looking at lift stations and pump stations and reservoirs, and continuing on over the next five years, investing into those areas as well.
One more question. Based on the available data or projections that you have, what percentage of residential consumers would be outside of the allotable water allowance? And what programs, if any, does the city have or you plan to have to sustain those individuals?
Mayor, that's a very good question. So our analysis is we have about 390,000 residential accounts. Of those, about 172,000 are always over the allowance levels and obviously would always continue to be over the allowance levels. There's about 35,000 accounts that remain under the allowance levels, that were always under before, and they will always remain under. There's about 17,000 accounts that were always under that are now going to have at least one bill that's over. And so that's particularly that we're looking at and trying to evaluate those. And then about 166,000 accounts or so that were over or under that we can, that we or under that we can, that we, under the analysis that we have that will continue to have some bills over and some bills under. And so it's really in those four categories, the ones that were always over, that will continue to be over.
And that's 172,000?
What's that?
You said that was 172,000?
Yeah, about 172,000. So about 44% of our customers are always over, that will continue to always be over. About 9%, about 35,000 accounts that were, that will remain unaffected under. And then newly over, about 4% of, of the accounts, about 17,000 accounts that were always under, that they're now going to have at least some bills that are over with adjustments. And then the rest of the city, about 166,000 accounts or so for about 43% that were kind of in this some months over and some months under, that will continue to have some months under and some months over, depending on their water use and how they use it. That's our analysis.
Then the latter part of my question, if there is, are there programs or anything that can help those that are lower income to make sure that we continue, we have, so that they continue to have access to reasonable water here in our city?
Yeah. So, so what we've identified and what we have into place is the, the water and wastewater utilities, as well as the Public Works Department sets aside funds every year to help customers, which is called Project Assist. And so if they have troubles meeting their resources of the water and wastewater and the solid waste bill, those funds then help them. They also try to direct them into the Human Services Department where they can get them tied into either state or federal types of things. And that's where we've identified about 900 or so of those customers in the past five years that have received assistance from us that are going to be affected with the allowance change. And that's the ones that we're going to be directly reaching out to, to try to do those personal home audits to try to reduce their water usage, to get them back below the proposed allowance levels.
Then one more question, I think I'm almost finished. Project Assist and those similar programs, about how many households do you think those can support under their current numbers or can assist under the current numbers?
No, we can, we can get that back to you. I don't have that off the top.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. Ginger, four years ago, when we were having this discussion, I recall, and you can remind me, but I was recall that the purpose of doing the rate was for infrastructure and for to move the water north. And that was the purpose of that increase.
So Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor and Subcommittee members, so at that time, I did not have the Water Department, but that is my recollection as well. Troy, if I'm speaking out of place, please correct me. And so with the Water Department, we have various needs over time. But at that time, that was the need for the increase.
Oh, you did solid waste, right?
I'm sorry, I was solid waste, yes.
Okay, I was like, what am I mixing you up with? Okay, you're solid waste, yes. But four years ago, that's my, my recollection that that's why we had the intensive forums, pieces, advisory, because purposely of the infrastructure and then a water plant, I want to believe.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, that's exactly right. And so what we saw at that time is, is very slow and moderate operating cost increases. And so we were able to either account for those and account growth or other efficiencies. And so the primary driver, I think of the, the rate that you're talking about in 2018 or 2020, one of the two, is, was primarily due to increases in our capital side, which was the primary driver at that time.
Okay. And so right now, the increases currently, from what I understand, is of personnel and increase the cost of supply.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, that is correct. That's the primary driver of, of what's causing our, you know, inefficiencies in the revenue that we have.
Okay. Because what I see in this whole, whole thing is that we're adding positions. And so when I, when I hear increase of, increase of personnel, I hear dollars. I hear increase of wages. When I've had this dialogue and what I'm reading right here is positions. Am I wrong?
So yeah, so there's a couple of things going on. One of the things that we got direction from the City Council is to move forward with taking over the Lake Pleasant Water Treatment Plant that is currently operated, as Councilwoman Guardado pointed out, by Veolia. And so we are, through the City Manager's budget last year, adding positions to transition. I wouldn't necessarily say that adding those positions is adding the cost, because we would be stopping the contract with the private company and transitioning those into city staff. What we talk about personnel costs, that's the increase in cost of wages and benefits. And so we had class of, compensation studies that we completed with the City Council's approval. We increased the compensation for the staff that's out fixing the water mains and sewer mains in the street, as well as the water and wastewater treatment plant operators, which is the bulk of our staff. We've had pay increases. And so that with the other soft personnel cost is what's causing the personnel increases primarily.
And then I want to talk about Project Assist. My understanding is that Project Assist, before ARPA, didn't have enough funding to project assist those community members. Am I correct?
So as part of the 2018 rate discussions, the department, as long as with the Public Works Department, increased the sizing of that so to ensure that they have proper funding. But that is definitely an analysis that we could redo to make sure that we have the resources that we need to for the need that's out there.
Okay. Because I believe with the ARPA dollars, we helped a lot of families in, in that area. Those dollars are going away. So what would the funding or go, once the ARPA dollars are gone, what is the funding in Project Assist, I guess is what I'm trying to get to.
So Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, as well as Councilwoman Hodge-Washington, to both of your point, we can go back and look at Project Assist, see what we're currently budgeted at, see how many families that will assist. We'll also take a look at how much monies were brought in from ARPA. And then also, if those monies were removed, what would that difference be? And so we'll do that assessment as well. Because to your point, we did add monies. And as Troy mentioned, we did add monies to that last time solid waste got a rate increase. And so we can look at where we would be now, where we stand today with the absence of the ARPA funds.
Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, the, the current funds are about $750,000 a year for Project Assist. And so we can go back, as Ginger said, and reevaluate that once the ARPA funds are now being eliminated.
And also, I'd just like to add, thank you to staff. The number that we have is about 2,100 accounts or assisted through that.
Of the 750 or the increase of the ARPA funds?
No, from my understanding, I'm, go ahead, Troy.
Yeah. So that would be through the 750,000.
Good. How many families?
100, 2,100.
Okay. What I would be curious to know, or I think everybody, is that by making the move of from 10 to 8, and I can't remember the other one, I think 6 to 5, I would like to know then who would then fall in, who currently is not at the level that we're at, not meeting the, not being able to pay their bill. And then if we shift, what would that look like with our current, current constituency or those participating in the water bill? Is that possible?
We can look at that. I mean, one of the challenges that we have is the only data that I have is who in the past has received assistance, not those necessarily that are on the edge. But we can try to pull maybe some HSD data or something to try to see if we can give a correlation.
Yeah, if you could do that, because I would like to see what that's going to look like, because it's a big shift, what that's going to look like. Plus, we're increasing. Now we're putting a whole nother group into this Project Assist. And that's where I'm, I'm going towards, I, proactiveness of saying, then how much money are we going to really need in this, in this bucket?
Yeah. Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, I mean, that's great insight and that's something that we definitely can track down and see if we can get across with the two databases if there's a way to come up with a correlation of that.
And as a payee, how do I know I'm outside? How do I know I've, I've gone past my 10? And how am I alerted as to you're past 10, you're under 10, boom, boom, boom? And then if this happens, now this is where you're going to be?
So it's most, all the information that you would need is on your city services bill. And so if you go to either the graphic part or actually your usage, if you have a water usage fee and there's a dollar there that you've actually gone above. But on the bar graph, you will see your, your household's water usage in units for the past month, as well as the previous 11 months, and how you then compared to the year before that. So it's actually on the bill of what you're currently using and how that relates to the units that we have.
What if you're on auto pay, like I am, who I just do auto pay and don't even look at my bill?
It'd still be, I think you'd still receive an email or you'd be able to log into the account to be able to identify that.
Okay. So I could log into my account and then be able to see analysis of me and then also see analysis of the changes?
Yeah. The other one that you have is we've been sending out quarterly postcards. You might have gotten one of your water use versus an average single-family home and versus the average home in your zip code. So printing up more information that's not even associated with bill. So that was actually things that we actually sent out to the mail to kind of bring awareness to people of how much water that they're using and kind of put it in perspective with that, with the, with the rest of the community.
Mayor, if I may add to what Troy is saying. So thank you for that question. Any residents who are watching that want to look at what the impact will be, they can actually go to ProposeRates.com. That's phoenix.gov/ProposeRates.com. And on there, we actually have a rate calculator. So it's been mentioned that on the water side, it's up to 26%. And then on the wastewater side, it's up to 20%. But I want to say this is a portion of your bill. So you can actually go online, enter in all that information, and then see what the impact to your water bill will be. And so that's something that is at ProposeRates.com, that rate calculator.
Okay. May I suggest that we would go out to the community, that we have a computer and all the items that we need so that then we can educate and demonstrate to those at our community events, this is how you do it, this is how you go, boom, 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 boom. So that then they, we are educating the community, they will go back and educate their neighbors and let the conversation go. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't think it's realistic in the next two months, but I would love to see us have more tools, including maybe a phone app where people can really monitor their usage. There's been really leaps and bounds and advances in technology. And we have people who are very data-driven in this community. Councilman Waring.
Thank you, Mayor. To the mayor's point, though, it stole my thunder again. Frustrating. Honestly, what would probably be most helpful would be something saying like a text or like the mayor said, an app maybe where it sends out an email or some notification, hey, you're getting close to being over in real time. Because like I do get my bill and I do look at it. I do compare it to last year and I do, and squirrels ate through some apparatus of yours, so I got a much lower bill. I turned myself in, so you may remember. But the squirrels were trying to save me money, but alas. But, you know, I get that after the fact. I don't get it like in real time where it can modify my behavior. Or if there was a leak or something, that would be extremely helpful. It may be beyond our technological capabilities, but I have zero doubt that there are other apps and other companies that do probably less business than us that are able to do it. So the mayor's point is well taken. Some of the money in this rate increase invested in telling consumers, that would modify my behavior. I have too many plants. There's no way I'm going to stay under. But, but, you know, a lot of people who maybe come up to the border, you know, they might, they might alter their behavior to make sure they don't go over. That saves them some bucks. Frankly, if it also saves some water, that's a good thing. So, you know, if they do one less watering of their plants or something like that. So, but it, after the fact, yeah, maybe you can adjust, but it's kind of hard to, to change it then. Now you're projecting for the whole next month when something else could be going on in your life. So, just a thought.
Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, so one of my questions on Project Assist, is that program for anyone that applies for it?
So it's my understanding is as long as they have a municipal service bill that they can apply, I think it's income-based is my understanding, that they would go through it as long as they meet the criteria, then the Human Services Department actually administers that program for?
And what's the criteria?
So Mayor, Councilwoman Guardado, I do apologize. That program is administered through Human Services Department. And so we're not prepared to answer that question today in regards to the criteria. We will follow up and make sure we get that information to your office, as well as the other council offices.
That would be great. And then I'm getting, I'm getting, my phone is being blown up right now. Because right now, we said we had about 2,000 people that were under Project Assist. At least that's what people are hearing. But residents are being told that it's about 11,000 people that are under Project Assist. Is that accurate?
So if we have staff here that is able to address that question, do we have anyone at this time? Holly, Holly, if you would come to the table, please. We have, what's Holly's last name? We have Holly Rosenthal, who is our Assistant Water Services Director, coming to the table.
Our annual number, average annual number of households served by Project Assist is approximately 2,100. So if you take the $750,000 and divide that by 2,100, it's about $357 per account. The maximum amount that can be provided under Project Assist is $400. So those numbers wash.
No, I get that. Trust me, I won't hold you to that. But do we know more or less how many people are under that program?
I'm sorry, can you, what do you mean by?
How many, how many residents, how many households are under Project Assist right now?
Approximately 2,100 per year.
2,100. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that number. And then I guess, I guess I just have a hard time understanding, how is it that we're, I mean, our, our ARPA dollars, right, are going to run out sooner rather than later with inflation, with everything that's happening? How are we, are we ready to go have conversations with the company, with these companies that are selling us the chemicals to try to give us a better rate on these chemicals? Is that part of the plan?
Mayor and Councilwoman Guardado, exactly. So that was some of the inventive or efficiencies that we implemented is on the procurement side to be able to have real-time conversations with the companies as changes in the markets. We have staff that tries to forecast futures of when prices are going to change or could change. But that is definitely things that we could be doing, yeah.
Great. Well, maybe, Troy, I'm probably going to invite you to our neighborhood, our top leaders meeting that we're having in the next two weeks, just so you can clarify that. Because that's not what people understood from a meeting that they had with you maybe two weeks ago. So maybe we can just clarify that. I know that people are very concerned, our seniors, you know, that, that's a huge concern. How do we continue, they're on fixed income. I don't know if they're going to be able to afford this. So I think, you know, there's a lot of more conversations. And I'm hopeful that we will have good conversations with our neighbors and that we listen to people in these hearings so that we can come up with solutions that, something that's going to work for the city, but then something that's also going to work for our residents. Thank you.
For our city manager, what does today's vote do? Are we actually raising rates or are we starting a process?
Mayor, members of council, today's vote is not the actual action to raise the rate. Today's vote is simply to comply with various regulations to notify folks of an intent to raise the rate. And so that action, the action that you take to actually raise the rates will happen in June, as Troy mentioned earlier. So that's two months from now, a little over 60 days. And the actual rate change doesn't go into effect until October. So that's an additional four months beyond when you actually take action. So six months from now is when the actual rate change would, would happen if you do vote in June to pass the rates.
Thank you. Thank you. And item two is the water rate revenues and then we'll go to item three, which is the wastewater revenues after we vote on item two. Any additional comments or questions before we? Okay, so the motion again is in item two for the water rate. Roll call.
Guardado?
No.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yeah.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 6-2.
And then I'll turn to the Vice Mayor for a motion in the wastewater rate revenues item.
I move that council adopt this notice of intention to consider increases in wastewater rate revenues and set a public hearing for June 28th formal meeting.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Guardado?
No.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 6-2.
Thank you so much. That is our final agendized item for today. We are adjourned.